I could only do the twenty-six.
Uh, what time are you looking?
Six, six thirty?
Five.
Okay, so we'll just, we'll just go for six P M on the twenty-four or twenty-six, sorry. Six P M?
Alright, sounds good.
Terrific.
Uh, White Oak uh, waterline easement. So we still have a request from the engineer's office for an easement. And uh, just as a recap to our last meeting, uh, this board wanted a little bit more clarity on the paving of White Oak. I spoke to the engineer's office today. They confirmed uh, that in addition to the work that they're doing right now, which they front loaded, they've moved the paving of the southern portion of, or the portion of White Oak between Merwin and Beeheimer. Up to this year, they said they're planning to commence that prepaving on, on the twenty-third, weather permitting. So that's where it stands now. And so in, in addition to that request, they also have a, a pending request for phase two of their project where they need an easement from this board, which is illustrated on page one nineteen of your packet. So if you're inclined, I have that for consideration for this evening. Good luck.
Okay, is that one of the items already on the agenda?
It's not already on the agenda. It's just an update right now. But if you'd like to add it for consideration, we can.
We can amend it and add it.
Cause I can't get in, so.
Um, I think we, we should probably add it for consideration. What do you guys think?
Yeah, that's fine. Yes.
Alright, sure. Let's do it.
Just gonna wanna do a motion to amend the agenda.
Got it.
So moved.
You wanna do it now?
Moved, uh, moved.
Eddie, do you need any time to?
He's writing.
Yeah, I, I have some language. I'll put it way at the way in.
Let's do that.
Okay.
Okay.
Well, we still need to do the motion now to change the agenda, so.
Oh, okay.
I move to, to amend our current agenda for tonight.
Motion to adjourn tonight's agenda.
Second.
Roll call.
Yep. Yes.
Yes. Thank you. And then the, the last two items I have pertain to other projects, uh, legendary trails. They have a replacement of thirty-four septic systems. And they're gonna be replacing that with a sewer line. That project will commence this summer and should be done by the fall. And then a similar project is the Nagley lift station. They're going to be abandoning the lift station, adding sewer line uh, in that area as well. So that, that should be running on a similar uh, timetable. They're also working to notify residents of those projects as well.
And of course, just so everyone knows, they is the Water and Sewer Department.
That's correct.
Of Claremont County, Ohio.
We have that, we also have that contact information in our offices. So if anyone needs a direct contact with the engineer's office, we can help with that as well.
So what kind of disruptions to the roads can we expect from this one?
Massive.
Near Nagley and uh, is it gonna be Tema or uh, Locust Corner?
For the most part, it's going to be, they said that it would be fairly minimal disruptions to, to the roadways and traffic, just based off the techniques that they're using. But we, again, we are not, we're not in control of that, but that's what they stated.
I understand. Well, that's very vague. Alright, uh, anything else, Eddie?
No, that's it.
Great. Alright, hop into uh, new business. Debbie.
I request a motion for approval of the payment of payroll for the month of May in the amount of five hundred three thousand, four hundred ninety dollars and eighty-five cents.
So moved. Second.
Motion in a second, roll call.
Mr. Campbell.
Yes.
Mr. Freeman.
Yes.
And Mr. Kelly.
Yes.
I request a motion for approval of the payment of the bills for the month of May in the amount of six hundred and fifty-six thousand, eight hundred eighty-six dollars and ninety-eight cents.
So moved. Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Freeman.
Yes.
Mr. Campbell.
Yes.
And Mr. Kelly.
Yes.
I request a motion for approval of the Delta Dental renewal with the Center for Local Government at eleven percent, eleven point five percent increase for the year beginning eight one, twenty twenty-five.
So moved. Second.
Motion in a second, discussion. Roll call. Go ahead.
I can let you know, we had a fixed, fixed rate for two years before at seven and a half percent, and this is the first increase we've had for a while.
I see. Thank you. Alright, so I got a motion in a second.
Mr. Freeman.
Yes.
Mr. Campbell.
Yes.
And Mr. Kelly.
Yes.
That's all I got.
Alright. Chief Brockerman.
I request a motion to reimburse tuition expenses to Police Detective Erica Hart for three thousand, three hundred thirty-nine dollars and thirty-two cents. Detective Hart is working on her uh, bachelor's degree. The tuition expenses are related to two courses she took in the spring semester at the University of Cincinnati. And the reimbursement is in accordance with the current police labor contract.
Motion.
Second. Motion in a second, roll call.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Chief.
And I request a motion to sell five mobile data laptops on gov deals. These lap, mobile dated laptops were replaced in February with updated laptops.
Motion.
Second. Roll call.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Alright, Chief Wright.
I request a motion to approve the appointments of David Bruce and Dalton England as part-time firefighter E M Ts at the established rate effective June, June eleventh, two thousand twenty-five and shall serve a one-year probationary period.
Uh, motion.
Second. Discussion. Roll call.
Yes.
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 Thank you. I request a motion to approve the appointment of Dylan Rains as a part-time firefighter paramedic at the established rate effective June eleventh, two thousand twenty-five and shall serve a one-year probationary period.
So moved. Second.
Motion in a second, roll call.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. I request the motion to approve the annual invoice from first due for the renewal of the Fire Department pre-incident planning software in the amount of five thousand, six hundred twenty-two dollars and seventy-five cents.
Motion.
Seconded. Motion in a second, roll call.
Yes.
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 Thank you.
That's alright. Service Director Kohler.
I request a motion to amend the new special hauling permit approved on May twenty, twentieth, twenty twenty-five with a fee of one hundred dollars to change the bond language. Basically, it's going from a ten million dollar bond and of just, cause it's outrageous, to one million dollars per mile. Um, so it just lessens the amount form.
Got you. Okay.
Motion.
Second. Roll call.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Uh, planning and zoning Christine.
I request a motion to pass resolution number two thousand twenty-five dash zero one four to declare nuisance in accordance with five oh five point eight seven for excessive weeds and vegetation for property located at three seven seven five Vineyard Woods Drive.
Is that the same property we cited a few years ago?
Both been in touch with problems, you know, we should, and they're working on getting it ready, but this at least helps us in the event that it completely goes from a halt.
Well, is it same ownership?
It is, yes.
Okay, motion.
So um, I'm gonna second it, but you know what I'm gonna say next? That the nuisance ordinance is a great way to deal with this, but you know what'd be a better way to deal with it? Property maintenance code. And we still haven't gotten to that. So, but you're new, so I'm not gonna, you know, be too, you know, angry about it, but I'm gonna keep saying it until we actually do it. So, second.
Alright, motion in a second. Any discussion? Okay, roll call.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Alright, Christine.
I request a motion to pass resolution number two thousand twenty-five dash zero one five to declare nuisance in accordance with five oh five point eight seven for excessive weeds and vegetation for property located at nine zero four Locust Corner Road.
A motion.
I'm gonna second it, but once again, property maintenance code would be wonderful here. Second.
Yeah, I did see these coming on the agenda, so I, you know, looked into them a little bit. Um, so I kinda knew the deal, but. Alright, so I have a uh, motion in a second. Uh, any further discussion? Roll call.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Christine.
I request the motion to pass resolution number two thousand twenty-five dash zero one six to declare nuisance in accordance with five zero five point eight seven for excessive weeds and vegetation for property located at three seven two eight Merwin Ten Mile Road. I did hear that they intend to have it mowed by tomorrow, so hopefully that will actually happen, but just in case it doesn't.
A motion.
You're gonna be surprised. Second.
Second chance for discussion.
I would like to bring up property maintenance code uh, during discussion, so if, if it's possible, I'd like to see if we could move forward with that.
I do have a motion in a second. And further discussion, roll call.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Alright, Christine.
And related to the last thirty, I request a motion to authorize staff to solicit mowing bids for an amount not to exceed three thousand dollars to remedy the foregoing nuisances.
Christine, on this one, if the, if we do have to mow, does that get tacked on to the property tax of the property at some point?
A lien is.
A lien, okay. Alright. Motion.
Seconded. Motion in a second, discussion. Roll call.
Yes.
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 I request a motion to reappoint Ms. Beverly Bensing as a regular member to the zoning commission.
Motion.
Seconded. Discussion. Roll call.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Christine.
I request a motion to reappoint Mr. Steve Bergman as an alternate member to the zoning commission.
Motion.
Seconded. Motion in a second, discussion. Roll call.
Yes.
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 I request a motion to appoint Ms. Christine Walzer as an alternate member to the zoning commission.
So moved. Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Yes. Yes.
Yes. Christine, Jesus.
Finally, I request a motion to adjust the job description for the planning and zoning assistant position to update the pay range to forty-five thousand to fifty-five thousand. Currently, the pay range is forty thousand to forty-five.
I assume the response isn't robust?
We've had a fair response. Um, I'm, I think finding someone is one thing, and then also retaining someone once they begin. So maybe if they start at a lower level, they're able to increase to encourage people to stay longer.
Do you have any benchmarks as far as what this type of role would pay in the community elsewhere?
Yes, we um, we have two benchmarks we are using. The first thing was a um, classification study that was done, and in that, that planning and zoning position was recommended start at a minimum of forty-five thousand, six sixty-one, maximum of fifty-eight thousand, zero fifty-nine. And then we also found some current listings for similar for similar postings in Ohio. And the, the average of those, the low end was fifty-two thousand, the high end was sixty-three thousand, so that's even trending a little bit higher.
Hmm. Okay. I appreciate the research. I'll make the motion. Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Okay. Eddie.
Alright, um, so this is, this is the first of the two motions. Uh, I request a motion to approve the Center for Local Government membership dues for twenty twenty-five in the amount of three thousand, eight hundred and twenty-five dollars.
So moved. A second.
Roll call.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Okay, and I request a motion to authorize staff to execute the White Oak easement agreement and associated documents with an amendment that the settlement agreement be updated to include a, that the fence be replaced. So the work that they're proposing would entail them removing the fence and moving vegetation along that, that line. Most of it's brush, so there's not really a tree or anything that's gonna be affected, but the, the fence um, under the current agreement would just be removed and not replaced. So recommend just adding that condition at a minimum.
Okay.
So, so moved.
Second. Motion in a second. Any discussion? Roll call.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yes. Alright, is that all for our motions? Anybody, any stragglers?
We're clear.
Okay.
Thank you.
Hop into public comment. Anybody who'd like to comment, please come up to the microphone and uh, if you could state your name and for us and.
Yeah, my name's uh, Gene Bradley. I'd like to uh, discuss if anyone in the room here likes paying property taxes. Do you not like paying property taxes, anyone?
Hey, this isn't really an interactive, just, you know, let's, let's keep it.
I think I have a floor.
You do.
Yeah, thank you.
Nobody has to solicit. You can come up and say what you need to say. You're more than welcome.
But the, here's the point. Uh, your police levy failed miserably here about a month ago. And also the school levy failed because they wanna replace a bunch of buildings. I for one, you know, I'd like to make some kind of a plan to throw at the schools to make their requests for levy money a heck of a lot less. I'm just Joe Bag of Donuts. But here I am, I'm gonna play the uh, comments as uh, Monty Hall on television, if y'all remember him. I wanna make a deal with you. I want you to eliminate the garbage levy of three and two-thirds mills against every one of these people's property taxes, and mine and yours. And let Rumpke send you a bill for that, like they do most people in Ohio. And so this gentleman here, he wants to put a police levy on. So if you eliminate one levy and replace it with another new levy, then that mo- most likely would pass if you would take the one levy off. And, and, and not only that, but you people increased it by a mill, so it used to be uh, two and two-thirds, and now it's three and two-thirds mills. Uh, I believe it was last November.
No, we haven't.
Or in November before.
No, when was the last time? Two years ago? Two.
Well, two years ago and a half, whatever. But anyhow, uh, no one likes paying property taxes, especially me. And my property taxes on my stick-built house up on Finch in the, in the old Amelia Village doubled. And I have the bill for it, not with me, but I can bring it and show it to you. So in order for this man to get money for his police department, you take the levy off for the garbage and it would be equal to or approximately in and around what you're paying for garbage, and so there wouldn't be any cre- increase in property taxes.
So just so I get this straight, you're coming here telling me that you can make that deal? If we do what you asked and we, we put the levy on, you can guarantee that.
My personal opinion, I think it's illegal. If you're collecting property taxes from these people and you guys and me and whomever else was involved in this community, and you're paying cutting a check every quarter or whatever, you're cutting a check for garbage to a commercial business, it's not part of government.
Well, I mean, I know, I know you've.
I got my bill here the other day. And I have an approach to the auditor. But I believe that ought to be in there as, as a specific uh, line item for garbage services on my property taxes, the bill for it.
Sure. I mean, I think that's fine.
Maybe it should be in red ink because you're paying a commercial business out of funds from a community that is uh, money-levered for garbage services.
Right, and we've had, we've had this discussion before. We'll take that under advisement as we're looking at options on how to move forward with the levy. We'll take that under advisement.
Alright, I thank you.
You're welcome.
Debbie, for information or one of you guys, I don't remember when the levy expires, the current, the current crash levy? Okay.
It was eighteen, it was eighteen.
Okay.
So it's coming up.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think it's got another couple of years on it.
Okay.
Yeah, people voted for that levy, for the garbage levy. That's what they, generally what they wanted. Um, I'm not necessarily advocating for or against it. I think that's what, for people to decide what they want when they go to the poll to vote on those types of levies, but um, just to kinda clarify, it does provide some uh, benefits as far as economies of scale when you go out to bid uh, that amount of, of, of homes all at once. Uh, you, you can't get better rates. Um, and, and, and it might be an opportunity to, to let some people know that um, there are certain services offered that you wouldn't get if you were paying as an individual, like um, large item pickups whenever you want. You can get a, a, you know, a couch or whatever they, a big item. You just have to call them and let them know it's out there. Um, you can get brush collection during the spring and things like that. Um, and some of those things that you wouldn't get if you were just contracted directly with, with Rumpke, or you could get, but you'd have to have to pay à la carte or pay extra for. And then relative to the levies, just to sort of mention that a little bit, you know, that if it was that easy and we could just pull off the garbage levy and get a police levy passed, I think that was kinda what Alan was getting at. I mean, I understand somewhat of the concept, but I, I think it's a little bit of an oversimplification because it, and it, I don't know if folks would necessarily see it that way, and they'd have to say, oh, okay, the garbage levy backed out. How much does that save me? And now I can vote on the police levy and um, I, I just think that's a mental, a bit of a mental stretch to think that that's a viable uh, option and plan for us, but that's just my opinion. Uh, I always appreciate input. It's always welcome.
Yeah, but the point is that, take one levy, um, asking for another levy, plus the twelve and a half percent that was passed by the General Assembly, uh, eliminating that uh, deduction. So it's twelve and a half percent more on top of which you would be paying three and two-thirds of bills uh, as a levy for garbage. So this man's levy will be approximately that, or maybe just a little bit more, so it would be, it would be something along an even kill, no one, no one's property taxes would be going up.
Okay. Well, as I said, as we look at it, we'll take it under advisement, and we'll, we'll sort through it. And we'll be bringing forward with a, a, a proposal, so. Certainly. Alright. Uh, thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Anybody else wanna come up? Yes, Mark?
I was trying to stay in my script. I hope my voice holds out. I sound a little stiff as I used to be, so. Brought up by the police levy, and the last week, I volunteered to be the chair for the uh, Pierce Township Police Levy. And I pledged I'm gonna give out my best September pressure for the community's success in delivering a win for the township of November. The levy failure has put us in a not-so-bout. Pressed in what should have been a year-long fight into roughly eight weeks? Eighteen weeks, sorry. The talent, enthusiasm, and dedication we have onboard though makes it possible. But it's gonna be tough. To all stakeholders of the submission in order to get the, to get the levy passed, everybody in this room and the committee as well. We already have a lot of work underway. Adam has created a website. It's not launched, and it's a work in progress. But so far, it looks really good. Bob, Mr. Powkey back here is working on his marketing magic. He's great at that. You know that. He's got a lot of words. Flamboyant. You know, all that kinda stuff that he's, he's a marketing genius anyhow. Michelle has about ten thousand social media friends, and we're gonna, she's gonna help to get the message out to our friends out there. Ed is researching a pre- is researching precinct voting results, and will develop a plan of attack for each of those. We've had other residents expressing interest in helping and looking forward to having them jump on in uncom- upcoming projects. Also wanna point out, I met with Kathy. Does everybody know Kathy? Kathy, introduce yourself. She's.
Hello, Kathy.
Kathy is our treasurer for the committee, and I met with her today, and I'm telling you, it is a monumental project process to get a form, get a pack. The, the forms you have to fill out are like this tall. It's a lot different than twenty fifteen when we did this fire levy. You know, we didn't have to do any of this stuff, Greg, if you remember. It is a gigantic project process now. Lot of regulations, a lot of hoops to jump through, but Kathy seems to have a great hold on it. She's really good, so we have a lot of faith in what she's doing. And of course, you could say that, well, without the West Claremont School District levy on the ballot this time, we should win easily. And I say, if that's what you believe, a repeat performance will probably take place. There's just too much to lose if we lose. People nowadays are fed up with taxes. We understand, okay? And they're prom- and they're in a foul mood when it comes to adding more obligations for community services, even though it benefits them to do so. So what's it gonna take? We have to sell us for our residents, and that means all of us, everybody in this room and the committee and everybody in our community. Not just the committee. It means intense, accurate, and understandable communication. It means getting feet on the street, talking to our neighbors, being physically visible in many different ways. We've gotta leverage the internet and social media. We've gotta utilize appropriate signage. We have to create flyers, handouts that are meaningful and have a punch. Knocking on doors and explaining to our residents what's at stake if we have no local police force. That takes all of us. It seems overwhelming, I know, but we must cooperate, communicate, and dedicate ourselves to accomplishing what we know is best for our township's future. Future. Okay, it's okay. So what do we do first? It takes money to mount an effective campaign. To win, we need to have about ten thousand dollars, darn close to it, A S A P. We need it quick. In May, we spent seventy-one hundred dollars. I currently have at least four hundred dollars to work with. We're asking for more money this time because we need to mount a more effective campaign. It's gonna be tougher. We need more money to make that happen. We're asking all township residents and township employees and everybody associated with the township to donate. The same goes for all community committee volunteers. Our total township team should be the spearhead for getting the levy passed. Our committee needs your help to deliver a win. Okay, I was around when the first police officer was hired in Pierce Township, believe it or not. I'm not really that old. You know that, John. I'm not that old, okay, but it was. Um, since then, we've grown to be an attractive, vibrant community with a law enforcement unit second to none. They face danger every day for us, all of us. Don't let them and our community down. Help us today so we can keep enjoying a safe and secure tomorrow. I'd be happy to answer, and, and answer any questions you guys might have. Anybody? Questions? Go ahead.
I don't know. Something involved with state law. But the school levy had a levy on, and the police department had a levy on, and no one would be able to read on any of those signs, with those two representations, what the millage was. And should there be some rule that you're asking for levy money, that you have to put that on your sign?
We're gonna put it on our website, whatever we can put on the website that makes sense. Remember, most people don't understand what millage is. Okay, there's inside millage. I know you guys know all that stuff better than me. There's all kinds of.
I'm a college inside millager regain.
That's above my, I just would be these guys.
Wait, do we have any rail lines?
Um, I don't know what you're talking about. Um, and at this point, inside millage has nothing to do with the police department, the fire department.
Don't you get money from inside?
We do, and it usually covers, well, it's considered our general fund, and that covers the service department, so that fix roads.
They're gonna have new transmission lines, like steel uh, transmission towers funded to the community.
Uh, we do have high tension power lines that come through the community. I do not believe there's any compensation that comes to townships for coverage of that. But one thing that you need to remember, because I know you, you used to be a member of Amelia Village. A village or city has very different rules and regulations and how they can finance their operations than townships. Townships are limited to simply one form of taxation, which is the property tax, unless we have some other uh, uh, configurations, but that's the.
But that's the only one we have.
Stand up firm, June, that they were spending money like Robin Sabres.
Well, I can't speak for the schools and I won't. I thought that the, actually, here's my opinion. I thought that their levy was perfectly asinine. I thought it was one of the dumbest levies I think I've ever seen, but that's just me. And that failed miserably, which didn't have a positive effect on ours. But I will tell you that pro, that townships have, again, I'm gonna say it again, one form of taxation and it's called the property tax. Without that property tax, we cannot do services for the rest of the, the community. If, for instance, property taxes were to go away and be considered illegal in this state. If you called 911, you would get nothing. We wouldn't show up because these guys wouldn't work here anymore. This township would be nothing. So unless we were able to find a bunch of volunteers who are willing to stand in. And if you want somebody, if you have a heart attack, if you want somebody to come and try to help you with a heart attack, who's never done anything like that before, good luck. So that's, that's what we're up against right now.
And the same Alan goes for. We lose our police department and you have a guy with a gun at your front door and you call 911. You're not gonna get the response that you have today. You'll be waiting on the sheriff's department to come from God knows where to respond to your property to help save you. So that's why it's important.
And you have their departments operating too under those circumstances.
Yeah, well, that's true. I mean, they're, they would be spread much thinner because while currently, um, Union Township has their own police department. Batavia uses the sheriff's office. Um, I can't remember. There, there are about four, Miami Township uses the sheriff's office as well. So those communities that have their own police department, those would be shut down. That burden would then be thrown onto the county, or onto the county sheriff's office. So then you've actually spread the thin resources of the county sheriff even thinner. And well, we would have police, but maybe they'll show up.
And by the way, it's not gonna be free either.
No, it will not.
We would have to pay the county for that coverage from the sheriff's department. So it's not gonna be free.
But here's the fun thing, without a property tax, if it went away, we couldn't pay the sheriff's office. So I mean, the, it, it, it really kind of comes down to the old adage, be careful what you wish for.
Any other questions about the levy or the committee? Thanks, guys. We need your help. Open up your checkbooks. All right. Thanks a lot.
Thank you, Mark.
Thanks, Mark. Okay, anybody else wanna? Come up? No. All right. We have, uh, any other business before we do the executive session motions? All right. Uh, I need, we're, we'll head, need to head into executive session. Uh, we, I guess we can't guarantee there would be no action taken. So if anybody wants to stick around, you're welcome to. Um, I need.
Before you go in, sorry, um, we don't, we only, we do not need the third executive session. You do not need to read that one.
Just the first two. All right. So I'll need a motion to adjourn into executive session as permitted by Ohio Revised Code, section 121.22G1 to consider the employment dismissal, discipline or compensation of a public employee. Do have a motion.
Motion. Second.
Motion is second. Discussion, roll call.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Motion to adjourn into executive session as permitted by Ohio Revised Code, section 121.22G3 to conference with the township attorney to discuss imminent or pending litigation.
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second discussion, roll call.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Thank you. We'll be back.
Do you want to mention whether or not we're gonna vote?
Did you?
Something you move with. Has anyone ever approached? He generally.
All right.
Louder than the plan.
We're back. I have a motion to come out of executive session.
Seconded.
Motion to second, roll call.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. So we will be taking action on one item still yet this evening. We have police levy as it was discussed tonight quite a bit that failed this this spring and we will have to go for another levy if we want to continue to have our own police department and over the long 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 term. So we need money to fund our police department and in order to help residents understand what the options could be if we continue to not get the money to fund our police department. We will have to go out and and get a bid from from the county to see what it would cost to contract with them to provide us our township Pierce Township with police services. So I think that's our our responsibility. And we have a due diligence to ensure that the voters have all the information they need to make an informed decision. If when we put this back on the ballot in in the fall. So that 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 is our intention. It's not meant to alarm anyone or say this is this is what's going to happen. Or anything like that, but we need to get a cost and a price to understand better what what that could look like and ensure that the voters are well informed so they can go out and decide what they what they want in the in the fall. So I wanted to explain the background and context of that a little bit. So so I would need a motion, I believe, to direct staff to, I guess, pursue getting a cost from the county for contracting for police services. Does that sound right?
Mm hmm.
Okay.
Make the motion.
Seconding.
Motion to second discussion. Roll call.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. All right. Anything else?
Motion to adjourn.
That's great. Seconded.
Motion to second, roll call.
Yes.
Yes. Yeah, yeah.
Yes. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.